I'd like to call this meeting to order. Regular city council meeting, City of International Falls, 5:45 PM, Monday, January 6th. Please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Can be noted for the record, all members of the city council are present this evening. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. Did the council receive the updated agenda with the additions?
Yeah.
Yep.
Is there any discussion on the most current agenda?
Move to approve it.
A motion by Councilor Buller to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Agenda is approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the regular city council meeting on Monday, December 16th.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kaler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Minutes are approved on a five zero vote. Thank you. Next on the agenda, payments of claims and approval, payment of accounts payable. First being the transfers, City of International Falls, to Fund 101, the general fund, from Fund Number 812, the lodging tax fund, in the amount of $246.85. There's also accounts payable claims. City of International Falls claims $1,192,813.98. Airport commission claims $28,843.84. Airport major capital project claims $25,745. Total accounts payable and claims $1,247,402.82. The mayor would look for a motion to approve payments and claims.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Holden?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Any discussion on the adoption of payments and claims? Seeing no discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. This carries five zero. Payments and claims are approved. Next on the agenda is open forum from the audience. If anyone from the audience would like to come forward up to five minutes to address the council, you may. There would also be ample time at the end of the meeting to do so as well. Moving, seeing none at this time. We do not have public hearing or the letting of any bids, so we'll move to old business. First item of old business is to approve the second and final reading of an ordinance, fifth series, to amend Section 10-30 Shade Tree Disease Control and Prevention.
I'll move.
Have a motion on the floor by Councilor Kaler. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion on the topic. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Ordinance is approved, five zero. Next on the agenda, number two, would be to remove from the table, from a previous meeting, the financial management plan for utility funds from Northland Securities that was presented on November 4th. So to continue discussion on this, we would need a motion and second to take from the table, and then we could begin discussion. So do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Holden? Is there a second?
I'll move.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, five zero. That simply gets this agenda item off of the table and into the open, and discussion I would like to thank the council. The reason this was tabled, I believe, is that I had asked you to at a previous council meeting. So I've done some review of this, and my questions, I don't want them to be the word I'm looking for. I don't want to be a roadblock, but I think it's noteworthy that there's plans to move ahead with the rehabilitation at the water plant, and if we need to do those types of things, obviously, we need to do them so that we have water pipe to our homes, and it's safe and drinkable, obviously. But the rates are going to go up significantly over time under this proposal, and with the addition of the stormwater over time, which comes out of typically where the city would carry a levy during the budget process, and into our water bills. So I just want to put it out there that if we need to do this within reason, we can approve it, we can deny it, we can discuss it. But I, you know, I think it's fair that the community at least know that the status of our utilities, they're obviously going to need work, but these are hefty rates. My family uses 5,200 gallons of water on average a month, and we're looking, if we stay in our same home and have the same water usage, at a $250 a month water bill in eight or nine years. And that's significant. This impacts our working families here that have enough struggles as it is. So I want to reiterate, I do not want to be an obstructionist to the project, to the I also spoke with Betty on there is a water increase by ordinance, which we would have our first reading later in the agenda. So even if we adopt the plan tonight, my understanding is we would still have to adopt the rates annually by ordinance?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, this, I just said, this is a plan, this is a study, this is the idea they gave us to not, you know, we don't have to go by this, but this if we want to have the funds available. And part of the problem is, is we're not in debt enough to get help from the state to rehab, unless something changes, or we don't have, we're not high enough in the affordability scale of what we pay and are capable of paying. This isn't according to me, according to the state. You have to meet a certain level before you can qualify for some PFA funds to help for the rehab and stuff like that. So that's where our power this come from, that none of us, and I appreciate everything you're saying, and we all agree we need some improvements. It was 12 years ago on the water, plant operator told us, you know, it isn't a new plant, you know? And that, and that, no one likes to raise the rates. Maybe we can find a compromise in what we can do and where it goes, but it's really something that seriously we need to think about, and you're right, the people need to know this is where we're at, and part of it, we're in this place is because others didn't want to make the hard decision, you know? But I understand, we understand the rates, but it doesn't seem too much when you turn on your water someday, or go to turn on your water someday, and you have no water coming. And that's where this all comes from. But like you said, we don't have to necessarily go exactly by this or whatever, but...
I agree with that, not going by it exactly and taking a harder look at it. I'm a little concerned about the public, what they're going to have to pay for water rates. I mean, it's a city that has a lot of elderly people, including myself, and so I think we have to take a short step, you know, take a look at what really needs to be done, what has to be done right away, and what doesn't have to be done right away. I worked in that plant back in 1990 when it was first built, so I'm real familiar with it, and I think we can take a harder look at it myself, and then, you know, go from there, so.
Well, I think all the input is positive. There's different schools of thought on it, and our city engineers sitting here, don't worry, I'm not going to call you forward. If we're, if we're not going to sell water, more water, I don't see how the rates can ever go down, or else we're just going to live on the depreciation from the investment. And if we have fewer water accounts, we'll have to continue to go up to cover the cost of making it. So as far as how long, how far along we are with the plant improvements, and when that's, there's, I've spoke quite a bit to Representative Scraba and Senator Haaschild. I spoke to Betty as well about, I hope we're going to see some type of bonding request that we would authorize to the state with the hope that they do have a bonding bill to get us some relief on the project, if that's what the council's priority is going to be.
I think we have to make it our priority, because the indication we had from them when they were up here was that this year is going to be the year for sewage treatment plants and water plants, and not brick and mortar buildings. So if we're going to get on board, we got to do it now.
Yeah.
And get the money, get into the system anyway, so that we can, and I think the study we did on it kind of indicates where the weakest links were, where we need to start, and that's why we did the study, to find those spots out, so we can not rehab the whole water plant, but we can start little by little, so that we can keep our clean water and keep our water production.
I suggest that, little by little, you know? Take a look at it, because this is a real big deal. I mean, you can't just go at 100 miles an hour and then have rates that are way too That's the way I feel about it, so.
Our, thank you, Counselor. Are we right to assume, in what I've found in the plan, is that they're really, other than stormwater, and the rate increase we're going to consider later tonight, the big hikes in the water rates naturally would come, assuming that we followed the schedule of the water plant rehabilitation, and that they would come mostly in '26 and '27 after we had bonded, and obviously our capital costs went up, so.
But I, at this time, though, I would, this is a plan they gave us at all, I would move to accept the plan, but, you know, we can adjust it accordingly if we need to, say, it would be very nice if this happened, that we'd got bonding money and we didn't have to do it at all.
Yeah.
We cannot, and if things changes, we can always lower rate for whatever reason. But I think at this point, just to keep the process going, and I think we, I move that we accept this plan.
We do have a motion to accept the plan by Councilor Kaler.
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any further discussion on adoption of the plan by Northland? Yes. Security?
Yes?
It's, public comment is not open.
For anything not on the agenda, this is on the agenda. It says so in the rules, it says so in your information.
Go ahead.
Public comments on things that are on the agenda. I just, I'm actually just looking to clarify something that...
If, if the council as a whole is comfortable...
Yeah, that's...
I just want me to clarify something, actually, that he said, that's it. Not about this specifically, I, he brought it up, which is that, you might understand that we're not in enough debt in order to get state funding? Is that what you're...
Yes, for some, for something, yes.
That's 100% correct, Mr. Bates.
Okay.
If you were to look, the funding that they offer for these types of plans, you have to get so much from your own community before they step in. So essentially, what they've been saying is us as a city have been not putting enough on the consumers up to this point, that they won't reach a helping hand in.
Okay. That's, I just tried to clarify.
Yeah.
No, perfect, thank you.
I know right as backwards as that is, but yeah.
And the floor is open for discussion before we vote, so, yeah, I have some familiarity. It's a double edged sword. If you have the money, you expend the money, you get the product. If you go into the debt, they'll limp you along. I don't think either is, they both have their pitfalls. But I would remind, before we vote as well, that this is the adoption of the plan, and that we would still adopt rate increases and the rates by ordinance, which would take two readings. Is that correct?
Yes, on an annual basis, yes.
On an annual basis.
This is not a requirement for you to follow each of these increases on that year, depending upon where you're at in processes, where you're at with projects, on whether that's a necessity at the time to do so. Each year, if you choose, you would do by ordinance increases. That is correct.
So, and the reason I'm asking is, we're not approving a water plant rehab in this document. There's none of that bigger stuff going on. So with that being said, I would call the question.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. Plan to adopt would carry with three ayes, one nay, and one abstention. Next item on the agenda under old business would be to remove from the table the rehabilitation of the Vactor garage. If there's interest in removing it from the table, please signify.
I'll move.
So moved by...
Second.
Councilor Wagner, second by Councilor Holden. No discussion on this question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. We are off the table and ready to discuss the rehabilitation of the Public Works Vactor garage. I, I would be willing to lead some discussion on this. I think that the public and amongst the council should discuss it. My understanding of this is that it is spawned from the facility study that was begun about three years ago. Yeah. That's correct. Okay. So it's, this is a big project, I believe about $3 million in totality, close enough, Whether we need it or not, I think the facility study was clear that that was going to start, if there was any facility that we were going to work on, it was fire and EMS. And then it moved on, and I think that Public Works was last on the list. We're not building a new fire and EMS facility that I'm aware of, or at least not today, building a new police station that I'm aware of. So, you know, in terms of this Public Works project, I don't think it's fair to the citizens of our community that we perpetually start putting them into debt. Utilities, those, the rates should sustain them. But if we're going to spend $3 million in Public Works to do these projects, we've gotten along. I don't know if there's been a new Vactor ordered, or it needs to fit in a garage, or won't fit in the garage. But I don't lay in bed at night wanting to go into debt the next day. I've spent some time at the street garage, and it's been discussed a bit. But if we start going into debt on some of these items, when's, when's this going to end? Between our levy and our local government aid, we're taking in a million and a half, $2 million more than just three, four years ago. I'd have to look, so some leeway on that, and now we've put in front of us that we're going to go into debt. So I'm concerned. I would ask the council, if they're concerned, I spent some time with Emma in her office regarding the financing of the project, and...
I too am concerned, because we've got so many projects that for some reason we're willing to go out on the limb, and it's going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money, okay? You've got a whole bunch of them, here, 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 all at one time, okay? And I've thought about it, some of these buildings I've worked in, I mean, I didn't have a problem with them. I don't know how fancy, you know, it's got to be, or what, but I just think if we look at all the different places we're eyeballing for fixing up, and doing this, and doing that, we're going to be in trouble down the road. That's my opinion. And I'm looking at the future, is what I'm looking at. I don't know how we can get stretched out. You talk about we can't get help on a lot of stuff, because we are good in the black, totally. I know that for a fact. But how, we got other stuff. We got ambulance situation, I mean, the list goes on and on and on, and I don't see how the taxpayers can, and I don't mind saying that, how they can pick up the tab. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor. I like the comment that you brought up about the debt. We do have the ambulance debt out there, and I'm looking at Chief Manasa, and I think he knows, we talk about the ambulance when we have time to, and I know we will be more. You know, the ambulance debt is out there, we've accumulated it, and I want to be cautious talking about that, that it's there, and it doesn't necessarily mean that anybody did anything wrong, or we could have not had the debt to begin with. But that debt still falls on the International Falls city taxpayer.
Yeah.
We've been, well, I haven't been looking for solutions like Counselor Kaler has, because I know that you go to the meetings and give reports, and everybody's having the same issue, but if we were to make a motion tonight and say, let's use the general fund, and let's, let's clean up on the ambulance debt, and let's move forward, and maybe we're going to get our taxing district. And maybe we're not, you know, I don't know if we could pay it and remain solvent, and so to take on additional debt in other departments, you know, if we absolutely had to and our back was to the wall, maybe this isn't the will of the council, but I'll leave it at that. Counselor Buller?
I think, yes, we've gone by without any salt and sand storage building for many years, which has been totally wrong. All this salt is leaching into the ground, because we don't have cover for it, and that's part of this, part of this project, is a new salt and sand shed, that we can store it inside property like it should be.
But what else?
The MPCA is going to come in and going to tell us, and we're going to have to do it sooner or later, no matter what, and we'll probably get fined too yet, because it's not legal. It's not legal at all.
I got that. I got that.
And the drains don't work, and the blue building that we're pumping that out, so I mean, there's issues there that we have that are hidden issues, that we need to address those issues for sure. If we can't do all of it, we need to address those for sure.
That, I totally agree with you on that, okay? But how much more do we need to do than that? What does that building need over there, really?
Needs all the...
I'm talking, I'm talking the city garage now.
Yeah. Which one, the blue one?
The, well, that's our, that's our building for our equipment and stuff, but...
That's what we're talking about now, is in this project.
Yeah, that's part, yeah, that's part of it.
The railing has nothing to do with it.
Okay. I can see the salt shed. I mean, I can, because that is important. But I think we got to look at all these different projects and be careful what we do.
Well, there's some environmental and safety concerns for employees here, Mike, that need to be addressed.
I got that.
And unless you want these people working there with the chance to get sick from some of this stuff, these drains, these traps.
I got that.
All that stuff needs to be...
I agree with, I told, I just said, I agree with that.
With the salt shed.
I agree with that.
So, you know, there, I mean, where do you, what don't you do?
But this was more than just that.
Well, it has bathrooms in it, it has...
Lot of stuff. I mean, it's got to be all looked at, how fancy or whatever.
My understanding was that some of this has to do, please correct me if I'm wrong, with a one-campus scenario in Public Works and eliminating the South Falls water shop.
That's part of it, that all come out of the facility study that came on, and was to move it all there, so to be a little more centralized, you know, more efficient. That's part of the reason, that's where it's coming from, but mainly, even if we didn't do that, that, I went to couture of the blue building and the regular shop last Friday, and it's a working safety hazard for a lot of guys. I can't believe no one's broken leg or tripped, hit their head over the drains. They got metal, whatever, on top of the drains, because they're sinking into the ground. It's very inefficient heating-wise, they got four big heaters trying to keep it warm. And the Vactor garage, we do have a new Vactor coming. We had to order a bigger, because the last one they got, they, they can't drive on the, or not supposed to be driving on the road, so they had to get a bigger one that actually is compliant for what they're hauling and what they're doing with it. And the Vactor, and they, so they have to make the Vactor garage there bigger, because there's nowhere else to store it. Now, there's some things in there, like just make the door bigger, or whatever, possibly, that they can do. The only other place would be to put it would be at the water treatment plant, but I don't think we want a sewer Vactor stored at the water treatment plant. We don't have to get too graphic about what that does for a living. And the money is supposed to come, the money, we budget the same amount every year for capital outlay, or capital improvements, and we've had discussions about this garage, and we come to a consensus in the committee, and when we brought it to the council before, ten engineers look at it as... ten engineers look at it, is instead of investing in some, uh, equipment, that money's gonna be going to pay off the debt to get this rehab. And we're not gonna, and that's something we're gonna have to get over, is getting into some debt, 'cause we, we cannot save enough before we improve things anymore, we just can't have the cost. We can't save up enough, or it just gets worse and worse and worse. So it is budgeted items, like it said there, and it's gonna be, and it'll be coming out of future capital improvement funds, that much, and that'll just be less for, you know, and they might not have a, a new front and loader when we need it or not, and a lot of that changes too, 'cause it's become more of a leasing deal than actually buying. So hopefully get it cheaper, that for the money it's gonna be coming from. Unless we change, cut back on everything for what we improve, or what we budget for over the years, it's gonna be the same amount of what we're doing now, it should not increase that amount, I don't know, for our budget, unless we decide to go back to the 2015 budgeting. We're already in 2023, I believe.
Another discussion from the council? Do we think that it would be fair to send this back to Public Works Committee? And get a sense from Northland, how they would finance it? How it would play into each fund that we're gonna budget for, or levy for? So that we know how, going into budget season, that it would affect our levy?
It, I guess, it, we can bring it back, but we've been through this, and this is kind of what we...
I think it's already there, it's already in the budget. Yeah, it's in the budget, it's already there.
Well, I spent an hour with Emma over the financing of it, and, and I left with an inconclusive answer. I, and, Emma, please understand, I'm not in any way calling you on the carpet, but I, I don't, I don't read this in here, is what I read is that we go to a car dealership, and I may have a job, I may not, I go pick a truck, they spot me the vehicle, and I say, well, finance it for me. And they'll get it financed for me, they wanna sell a new car. And, you know, then, I have to figure out how to pay for it, and obviously, that's, we pass it, that's what we're gonna have to do here.
If I may, Mayor and Counsel, as indicated in the Public Works Director's note there, he would be working with Northland Securities to get the necessary financing based on what he currently has for budgeted dollars that he would be using to finance and pay the debt service. It's not, he's not gonna be doing more than that, only what he would have available with his current budgeted dollars to pay annual debt service.
Under, understand, so that could be, you know, if that's the budgeted dollars, then if they had to make it fifty-seven years, or twenty-three years, or sixteen years, they would just manipulate that to, to make it fit, I mean...
We had, and I don't have the paper, that was broken down to in how many years, wasn't it? They gave it to us? Well, at Public Works, that, oh, how mu, and I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, whether it's fifteen, twenty, or thirty. And we recommend one, I can't remember at the time. But I...
And right now, the Police Control is giving, the MPCA is giving loans for these buildings, sand, salt, sand, storage buildings, at one-half percent.
And we, and we've already approved this at the last meeting, the salt shed.
Salt shed, we did.
To apply, we have, to, we approved applying for the loan for that.
Yeah, we did.
At the last meeting.
And, in my conversations over at the street garage, you know, I'm not going to hide that the one thing that they thought that they needed was the salt shed, if they got to pick, I didn't, the, the other items weren't really addressed, for, for what it's worth, so...
I offer my unsolicited opinion.
How about if I solicit it?
That would be great. It's not a legal opinion, but I have sat on this council before. And I recall councils even before that, putting off what needs to be done. So we are looking at a huge price tag right now. But what is that price tag if we don't fix this? If the bu, building falls into further disrepair, if we start getting workers liability actions because this building is so dilapidated, or it's so dangerous for these workers? I, from a personal perspective, I'm one of the younger people in this building, and I know that struggle. I know that struggle by buying old homes, buying old cars, whatever it may be, and maintenance is a huge key to what you possess. And I think it has been overlooked for a very long time, along with a lot of the generation that's here, and I understand that, and I'm not angry about it. But when we have that generation looking down, or having issues with what this council's doing at my generational level, where we have to spend this money to fix what's being passed down to us, it's just the way it is. And I am scared to see what these random things that break, and we have to fix them within a week, look like. And I would be scared of what it looks like in five years, when we can't avoid it anymore, and how expensive this actually is. That's just my unsolicited opinion.
Thank you, Chelsea. Well, I would prefer to see a motion to send this back to Public Works Committee, see what the budget looks like, what the repayment looks like. And then we can at least present it publicly before we vote on it. With that being said, if someone offers a motion of some other kind, we would move...
We've already passed the salt shed thing, so I'm gonna make that motion, to send the rest of it back to the Public Works. We already agreed on the salt shed, so that's a done deal. Right, Betty? We agreed to that.
Yes, correct.
So the rest of it, I want them to take a look at it.
We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Holden to send back to Public Works Committee for further discussion, the rehabilitation of the equipment in Vector Garage, is that correct, Counselor Holden?
Yeah.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
I have a second by Counselor Kaler, is there any further discussion? Question?
Well, I do have discussion, but I'm, I want, but we will have it at our next Public Works meeting, which is next Tuesday? Yeah, next Tuesday, is Public Works?
Two thirty.
Two thirty. And then, the next council meeting, we'll come here and we'll make a decision one way or another. And it'll be at the committee at the hall later, next, did I say Tuesday? Monday. That, that's why you were looking at me like that. Monday, it's only two more weeks, but then we, our next regular city council meeting, after we discuss it in Public Works, we discuss it at our committee at the hall, we should be able to come here and make a decision next, um, at our next regular council meeting. Uh, 'cause I think everybody will have plenty of time to have looked in it, looked what they thought. A big help, if you have any ideas, and where it's about would be to talk to Ted about the plan here. And I'd just like to also add, whether it's these projects, or the fire department, or the police department, these aren't just our supervisors and our directors of these departments just coming up with these random ideas. They're somewhere along the line, they've been directed to come up with these plans, and they brought them to us, and this is just what they thought, what they found out from our direction, they're... I just wanna make that clear, that they're just not coming up with this, and this did come from the facility study. And Ted asked us that day, so I'm saying at Seventh Street, he said yes. So he went forward with looking at how we can fix this stuff, because we weren't gonna make a forty-million-dollar public Works garage, we're all pretty sure that, or a, whatever the, and then add on another one, so, that's where this came from, but that, I'm fine with moving along again, but at, by our next council meeting, come up with the answer yes or no.
Is that your motion, then?
We, that's my second, with, my second with that, uh, that amendment to his motion, if he's fine with that. I might as well confuse you a little bit, your first night.
You had the second and the discussion, the floor is still open for discussion.
Yeah, but that's all I have to discuss, and that would be my second, that it's just next week.
Okay, question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to the consent agenda.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda.
I was...
Second.
Oh, were you gonna, do you wanna ask for a motion before I started? See, I, I either don't say on time, answer questions, or I just jump ahead.
I, I would like to, thank you, Counselor Kaler. I did have one question on item number six, which was travel and continuing education training expenses for Public Works staff as presented. I read through that. I think there was like eleven conferences on it. I don't know if it's necessary, if that's for one person, or if that's for several, or how many go to those conferences, or... I've just mainly caught my attention that there was eleven conferences, I think that's what the number was.
Mayor, if I may, technically, there's no discussion on consent agenda, but you could remove it and discuss it separately. However, the, the note does indicate that it's various Public Works staff. So, different Public Works staff, depending on licensures, and different things that each of them need throughout the department, would be attending these various trainings throughout the year.
Thank you, Betty. Yeah, as far as the discussion, there wasn't a motion, so if I broke protocol, I would...
That might have been me doing that first.
I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda pursuant to sending item number six to Public Works Committee.
I'll make that.
Do we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Buller, any discussion?
Just that, the, these are...
There's no discussion on the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so, uh, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Although, yes, consent agenda is approved, five zero. Moving on to new business. Consider approval of the revised special assessment of the cost of the Batuminus paving, which would have been pursuant to our hearing that we held at five o'clock. Did we, we would...
There was no motion to move anything forward, so we would not address that at this time, we would just skip the item.
Yeah, take it off.
Right. I, yeah, do we want a motion to postpone to a certain date, or just leave it?
It can just get added to the next agenda, you don't have to do any sort of formal motion.
Moving on to number two, under new business, a mayoral proclamation declaring January twenty-sixth to February first, twenty twenty-five, as Catholic Schools Week at Saint Thomas Aquinas School.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler, discussion. Seeing no discussion, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Although, yes, motion carries five zero. Item three, request approval of year twenty twenty-five license renewals that may include tobacco and/or liquor applications as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, first by Counselor Kaler, second by Counselor Buller, is there any discussion? I believe this would be for Quarters Inc., doing businesses, Quarters Fuel and Car Wash, is that correct? Okay, discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although, yes. Motion carries five zero, license is approved. Item number four, adopt resolution Airport Improvement Grant Agreement, number one zero five eight seven two three four, state project number A thirty-six oh one dash one twenty-two.
I'll move.
Have a motion by Counselor Buller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden, discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although, yes, motion carries five zero. Number five, Public Works Committee recommendations. Consider first reading of contract ordinance setting rates collected as revenue supporting water and sanitary utility operations for twenty twenty-five. There is a...
Can I make that motion?
A motion to approve by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second on the ordinance?
Second.
Excuse me, we have a second on the floor by Counselor Wagner. Discussion? I would add that because this is an ordinance being the first reading, it would take a second reading and approval to approve the rates. I believe that the rates that Mr. Broca had asked for were per the utility rate study. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Although, yes, motion carries five zero. Number six, consider first due agreement for service contract for the International Falls Fire Rescue EMS. Madam Manassa, Fire Chief and EMS Director.
Thank you, Mayor. So a brief synopsis of what we're looking at, we have multiple software platforms that we need to run our operation. Uh, those are dictated by state law on the EMS side, and NFPA on the fire side, along with some uh, other nice-to-have software, scheduling, and pre-planning, to that nature. Uh, what we've ran into over the course of a couple of years here is the state has issued a free ImageTrend subscription on the fire side, and we pay for an EMS subscription, along with some archiving from ImageTrend on the EMS side that we pay for. Uh, we did that with the promise that ImageTrend was going to integrate and have one platform to serve all. That has not happened, so in talking with other departments, neighboring departments, uh, Hibbing is already on this, Cloquet is transferring, and Virginia's looking at it as well. Uh, so we're looking at changing over to first due, that offers everything on one platform. So again, we pay quite a bit of money to various organizations, this would get everything under one roof, one service provider, and do everything that we're currently doing, and hopefully a little bit more, so, that's what we're looking to do. Uh, the first year is a little bit higher, as outlined in the, the contract here, and after initial implementation, then, uh, it goes down from there, so, for a yearly subscription. It's a thirteen-page document in front of you, I don't know that I need to go through every page, but I'm certainly here to answer any questions that may arise.
My only question is, is it's comparable to what we have, but better hopefully?
In service delivery or price point? Actually, the answer is yes to both. So, so the, the person that I'm dealing with with first do and then the implementation people, so I'm gonna be very blunt. I don't know what happened at ImageTrend, but a lot of these people came from ImageTrend. So I think there was some discourse within the company before these people broke out, started their own company, took those ideas that were gonna be to merge the two and started their own company. And it seems to be very success, very successful so far.
Thank you.
The only note I would have, just for council is aware and Betty is aware, the contract that is in the packet, the date on the very top of the first page is August 31st, 2024. The revised contract is exactly the same, other than it says December 31st, 2024. That is an electronic format that I could not print out. So if we cannot handle that electronically, then we'll have to make some other arrangements. So I would just, my only comment is that we handle that offline, other than normal contract business, I would say.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief? I'd assume you'd want to move on this right away.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Will we can move forward with the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Holden?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion on the contract.
Aye.
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 Although yes, carries five zero. Thank you. Next is to adopt a resolution adopting and implementing the Rainy River, Rainy Lake Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan.
I think that's me.
I was gonna say, I think this is your.
Me, yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, this one was more active than the Rainy River quick one that I was appointed to again and never met. But that's a story for another. Yeah, this is for the last, well, going on two years now, with the soil and water from district at the county, they got money. And this is all part of the grant process to come up with a plan. And it's called the One Watershed One Plan. And it's the upper, as you can tell in your packet, it's the upper Rainy River, you can, or Rainy Lake and down to the river to get it all together. And it's to do with making it better. And, and it's, what it's doing is replacing the plan that's coming up. It's time's up. And it's voluntary, all the things, you know, in here, they're ideas, but there should be some funds to help with some of the improvements that they're asking for. Like some of the goals are like five septic systems a year, trying to improve them, things like that. So the water doesn't leak chowder and getting a culvert inventory to help water move, all that kind, county roads and stuff. That's what it is. And this is just to prove it. It's us, the city Rainier and County, each had representatives on the board along with, and Jason was there for the city, along with people from other agencies. There were different committees that came and got this together as a lengthy, thorough process. And I learned more about water than I ever knew and other things. So I'd recommend us adopting this policy. That was a good summary just of it. Jason, what have you been up to?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion. I'll be the one to ask a question. Is there any inherent liabilities by joining the plan that?
No.
We take on as a city?
No.
Any more discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion carries five zero. Resolution passes. Number eight, which was the addition to this agenda. A resolution authorizing a funding request to the Minnesota Department of Transportation's Active Transportation Program. Could we have some background information on this? Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, a couple of months ago, we were directed to apply for this, these funds for this Active Transportation Program. And it's for a bike trail or a Batuminus Trail from 14th Avenue to 11th Street along Wayside there. And as part of that application packet, we need to pass this resolution of support. And if we are awarded the grant, it would cover the full cost of the project. So.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilor Buller to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion on the resolution.
Aye.
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 Yes. Motion carries five zero. Resolution is approved. Any other business? Reports of boards, committees, and department heads. Because this is my first meeting of the year as a mayor, we obviously have the police and EMS reports in our packet. I don't recall that you typically came forward to, I don't have any questions and I doubt the council does either.
Let's really want to.
It's been both ways. So it's a decision. Any other reports? With that, we can move to audience open forum. This is the last opportunity to come forward and address the council for this meeting. We'll move on to correspondence. Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting information from October 17th, 2024. And as well, the 2025 Koochichin County Board Meeting schedule. We typically review this, place it in the file.
It's just correspondence, information for, you know, mayor, council, citizens.
No.
Correspondence, yep.
Reminders. Offices are closed in observance of Martin Luther King Day on Monday, January 20th, 2025. The next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 at 5:30 PM. And it was changed because of the observance of Martin Luther King Day. That being said, there is no further business and this meeting is adjourned.